Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of February 3rd, 2014. Would you stand with me for the Pledge of Independence?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And would you please roll the call, please?
Councilmember Schwab.
Here.
Councilmember Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Altough.
Here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
And Mayor Hedges.
Here. Item two is the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a correction, adding seven E., the George Washington Amendment, onto that.
Resolution.
The resolution, yes. George won't be here, but we have a resolution.
Sure, sure. Okay, if we could add that to item seven E. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda with the correction.
One second.
The second?
There was a second from Mr. Reverend Dr. Schwab.
Few too many.
Few too many.
There are only got one.
He only supported, Schwab was seconded. Anyway, then moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It would be yes.
It would be yes.
Yes.
Thank you for the correction. All in favor of approving the agenda?
I will.
Yes. Okay. If you stand corrected, procedural thing. Item three, approval of the minutes of our previous meetings. We had a regular meeting as well as a closed session on January 21st. Those regular minutes are in the packet. We'll pack that one first. Any additions or corrections to the regular meeting minutes of January 21st?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for January 21st.
I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of regular meeting of January 21st, 2014. All in favor?
Yes.
And then the closed sessions have been circulated and there's a motion on my team.
I move that we approve the meetings, or excuse me, the minutes of the closed session.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the closed session of January 21st. All in favor?
Yes.
And the vote. Item four is approval of the accounts payable. Those are in the packet for review. Any additions, corrections, questions?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
One second. Been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable as provided to us and for this, we would need a roll call.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Howe.
Yes.
Councilmember Altough.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Thank you. And item five is citizen comments for anything that does not appear on the agenda. So any citizens or guests who'd like to step up to the podium, this would be the time to do that and walk away.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Diane Jones. I am not even a week old for newly appointed Kent County Commissioner for District Four. And I have been taking quite a bit of time to stop to make phone calls, to come to board meetings, to introduce myself, to help make sure we have a solid communication back and forth. So I welcome phone calls, emails. I think it's nice to have a liaison that you can touch base with with county issues that could possibly arise. And here I am. That's what I had for this evening.
Thank you, Diane. Good to know you and welcome to law. Although I'm sure you've been here many times before, Diane resides in Kent Township.
Yes, I do.
Yes. Anyone else here to address the council today? Saying none, then we'll move on to item number six, our old business and strategic plan update. And Mr. Alt.
Well, just going to cover a couple of things that we covered at our workshop, really for the benefit of the public who are here. We spent some time reviewing the strategic plan, talking about 2013 accomplishments, and then looking at our 2013-14 dashboard. Dashboard was something that was completed last year, and the council will be looking at completing that again. And basically, what the council does is they evaluate how well we're doing within certain areas of the strategic plan, what areas need some improvement, and then they set priorities for the upcoming year. So that's what we're at in the strategic planning process. This item will become the report that updates the council and the public on where we're at and the goals that have been set for the year. And I think we're going to have a pretty good year. We're going to talk about that in a little bit here.
I think that's it. Okay. Any additions or questions by the council? Saying none, then we'll move on to item seven, our new business and if you can catch your way. And Mr. Howe, as the, as our city manager, has an address for the state of the city. And welcome, Mark.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about some things that we've done, some great accomplishments that we've had, but also maybe looking forward. So mayor, council members, citizens and taxpayers and coworkers. What unites us is greater than what divides us. Period. During the past year, a few individuals have organized efforts that cast a shadow over significant accomplishments we have achieved, united, working side by side with courage and with determination. Tonight, I want to focus on what unites us, to celebrate our accomplishments and to dream about what is possible. Going into 2013, we were positioned to accomplish a great deal. We balanced a budget that was a half million dollars in deficit. We saved more than a million dollars by refinancing debt. We invested in public infrastructure, improving streets and parks. We explored firsthand the prospect of a biodigester. We secured property for future downtown parking. We created greater transparency by updating our webpage, creating a Facebook page, digitizing public records, and streamlining the process for Freedom of Information Act requests. We initiated and participated in a community vision, uniting with the townships, the school district, and the chamber. And we developed our own strategic plan with a vision to be the vibrant core of a private As we enter 2013, we faced a number of challenges head on. Perhaps the most significant was the record flood in April. We responded with courage and determination. When the water receded, our partners at Flat River Outreach Ministries organized volunteers to help our citizens recover from the damage. Tonight, I'd like to say thank you to breath for all that they do to assist people and families in the community. Providing safety and security for citizens and taxpayers is the core of our mission. We continue to operate an effective and efficient police department. And in 2013, named Stephen Bukula, an 18-year veteran of the department, to be our new chief. We collaborate with the townships in the operation of a fire department. And in 2013, we jointly approved the purchase of a new fire department, or a fire truck, to replace two aging vehicles. We contracted with Rockford Ambulance to provide emergency response, and we continue that partnership today. We also initiated a number of additional safety projects. We secured grant funding to place AEDs in several public buildings, working with our partners at Lowell Public Schools, the Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce, Daniel Hart Library, the Lowell Historic Museum, Lowell Light and Power, and the Lowell Area Fire Department. We completed a security fencing project at the water treatment plant, helping to protect our award-winning drinking line. And we improved the dugouts and installed netting to increase safety for children and spectators at Creekside Ballfields, working with our partners at Lowell Lollie at Back Air Studios. We invested more than three-quarters of a million dollars in infrastructure and facilities, with more than 80 percent of that coming from state local brands. We continued our street improvement program by reconstructing Simply Street from Ridgeview to Valadestka. We implemented a sidewalk replacement program, replacing more than a mile of sidewalks. We maintained and improved our facilities by improving the heating and cooling efficiency here at City Hall, by improving the handicap access door at the library, and replacing some worn carpet here at City Hall. We also completed the removal of lime from the drying feds of the water treatment plant. We are becoming a destination for outdoor recreation. In 2013, we continue to work toward creating places identifying and improving outdoor areas where people can relax, enjoy each other, enjoy their families. And we solidified our partnership with our next-door neighbors, the North Country Trail Association, by becoming an official trail town. We participated with the National Park Service and the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to create a development plan for the Fred Meyer River Valley Rail Trail. And in this process, the city of Lowell was named as one of only two trail hubs along the entire 125-mile corridor. We expanded our local trail system, connecting the Lowell Area Recreational Authority Trail to Main Street with the Ridgeview Connector. We created opportunities for overnight tent camping along Confluence and the Grand and the Flat Rivers. But perhaps our most significant accomplishment was through the water extension. We removed the old amphitheater and replaced it with a sweeping vista of the Flat River, maintaining the look and feel of our Shoggo in its design and, excuse me, in the architecture. Encouraging quality neighborhoods is one of our strategic focus areas. In 2013, we were once again designated as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. We also received a growth award for the fifth straight year because of the Arbor Board's continued investment in the urban canopy. We also worked with a Valley Vista neighborhood resident about to develop a community garden at Creekside Park. In addition, we assisted the Intercity Christian Foundation as they constructed new homes in the city of Lowell. Finally, we approved government efficiency and set the stage for a secure financial future. We updated the city quota ordinances in the areas of administration, streets and sidewalks, and working with the planning commission, the sign section of the zoning ordinance. We adopted a balanced budget and learned that we ended the prior fiscal year with a surplus of more than $136,000. While investing in our infrastructure and balancing a budget, we also reduced the military for the first time in 30 years. Working strategically, we have identified as a long-term goal to encourage property value growth so that we can further reduce the military. As we move into 2014, our success depends on remembering what unites us is greater than what divides us. That's not to say that we ignore our differences. A vibrant discussion about the future of our community is necessary. It's healthy. It's a vital component of our heritage. At the same time, we cannot let the discussion overshadow what unites us. We are united when we work toward common goals. We are united when we respect each other. We are united when we hold each other up. We're divided when we tear each other down. Perhaps the greatest challenge facing our nation, our state, our community is demanding stability in public discourse. Heard other leaders talk about that. We're blessed to live in a country where we're free to speak up. However, with that freedom of speech comes responsibility. And we have much more to do. Exercising responsible civil dialogue in the coming year will be essential to our success as we tackle critical issues. We need to decide the future of the Shoggo. We need to continue improving the quality of streets. Currently, more than 70 percent of them are rated in poor condition. We need to identify a downtown connector for the 125-mile Fred Meyer River Valley Rail Trail. We need to develop a plan for strategic investment in downtown. And we need to continue financial stability, encouraging investment in property values in order to reduce the military. We need to be united in a fierce belief that we can be the vibrant core of a thriving community. Thank you for allowing me to share some comments with you tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much. Very nice. And consider what's going to be coming here also. Item B is the Grand Valley Metro Council Resolution, adding Lowell Township as a member. And with that, the closing of background, that's Mark McShurles.
I'm sorry, I was reading and hoping I thought you were going to go to supervisor of jury.
Well, Jerry, if you'd like to come up. Jerry is a supervisor of Lowell Township. I certainly welcome you as a matter of record and so forth, which is what I was hoping maybe to hear. But I could do it too, because I know the information.
All guys were arguing over who's going to.
This is why he rose to the issue.
This is our discourse. But anyway, all of the various governing bodies need to approve any new member. And it's with great pleasure that Lowell Township has chosen to become a part of the Metro Council. And Jerry, welcome, if you'd like to state a few comments.
Okay. I'd also like to introduce Ron the Benedict Trecher, who's sitting back here. She came with me tonight. I want to thank you for inviting me here, and I want to thank you for considering our membership into the Metro Council. And I agree with Mark's comments that, you know, we don't always agree with each other, but if we continue to have this discussion, you may still not agree, but you understand where the other person is coming from, and you can get a lot more accomplished once you understand that. And I think through the vision process that we've all worked on together, we've learned a lot more how to do that. And just, we need to continue that conversation to better our community, because I think if we all work together, we'll be able to grow and prosper as the greater Lowell area. And I think part of us joining the Metro Council is just, it's making that regional. You know, we have to have that cooperation if we're going to grow and prosper. And with that, that's all I have to say.
Jerry? Yeah, that's the background. And so we would look, well, first of all, I'd open up to the council if there's any comments, to be sure. Any comments from the public?
Could you explain a little bit about what the Metro Council actually does?
Could we explain exactly, again, because of the lack of a microphone here? The question from Mr. Salzweedle is, could we explain briefly what the Metro Council does and what its function is and its purpose? And maybe, Mark? Is it, would this be a good time to be telling?
Yeah, I don't have any notes in front of me, so I can, I can handle that. Probably the biggest, the Metro Council has at least two and maybe three specific areas that it works with its member municipalities on. But sort of overarching in those three areas is just the idea of collaboration and trying to find ways to work together, trying to look at the region as a regional economy rather than sort of these small micro economies. And as a matter of fact, the Metro Council is taking a lead with three other metro organizations on this part of the state to work with the governor to create a regional prosperity, to fulfill the requirements of a regional prosperity mission. And I won't get into all those details tonight, but I'll be glad to share some of that with you. But the three specific areas are transportation, GIS, geographic information services, and then stormwater. And there are some requirements that the larger cities have, some of the smaller units in government, the Drain Commissioner, is going to be required to put together some stormwater plans at some point in time. So they're working on the front end of that to try to help everybody collaborate. Transportation is huge, and it's huge for us because we're an act 51 agency. But then Regis and the mapping and those things are a real benefit as well to the areas. But the biggest thing, I think, is really in that area, overall collaboration as issues come up. And I think having Lowell Township sitting at the table with the city of Lowell really raises the visibility of this greater Lowell community within the regional area, within the Grand, as much as we're in. So I think it's a great, we're already creating great partnerships and having Lowell Township at the table is just going to be better for this area. And I think we're going to be able to get the attention of the folks over there.
Thanks, Mark.
And any other questions or comments from the public? In fact, there is a resolution before us.
I move that we adopt the resolution to approve Amendment Number 38, adding Lowell Township as a member of the Grand Valley Metropolitan Council.
I'll support.
Been moved and seconded. We knew that.
Go get used to it.
Sure. Seconded to approve Lowell Township joining the Metro Council. And for as a resolution, we would need a roll call.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Howe.
Yes.
Councilmember Altough.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Congratulations, Lowell Township. Item seven C is, seven C is our water treatment, water treatment plant that we've got some filter bid. So, Mark?
Yeah, I've been having some trouble with filters at the water treatment plant. And Brian is here, and he can correct me when I totally blow the explanation of this because he's our expert. But I'm going to give it my best shot. We engaged the services of an engineer to help review our processes, but also look at our equipment. And they came back with a recommendation to change processes a little bit, but also just looking at the filters, which need replacing. We need to replace the filters. We need to start over with a new process, with new filters in place. So we conducted a bid process. The results are interpacked, and I'm going to read those. In full disclosure, I do want you to know that we had a little bit of an administrative error. We were thinking that the bid opening was at 2:00, and so we opened the bids at 2:00, but we advertised for 3:00, and another bid came in at 3:00. And that bid happens to be the whole bid, which was cool. Glad that it came in at 3:00 and in time. So I think it's about a bid. There wasn't any communication outside of a couple of people within our organization about what the bids were. So I don't anticipate that there's a problem with that or disclosing, that anybody disclosed what prior bids were. So I'm confident that we ran us out of bid process. So the bids were from Anthro Filter at $25,387.68, Northern Pump and Well at $23,280, All American Water Solutions at $22,200, and Peerless Midwest at $16,115. We have $130,000 set aside this year for capital improvements. Some of that is for our water meter replacement program. But this certainly would fall within what we have set aside for capital improvements. We made a couple of projects around, but falls within what we have pledged to do.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions?
I do, Brian.
I'm wondering what the anticipated estimated shelf life of the filters? Mr. Paul Parker?
With the new process that the engineer is working on, they should last probably 30, 40 years.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I move that we approve the low bid of $16,115 from Peerless Midwest.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to go with the recommended bid of Peerless. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Excuse me. Yes. Thank you. Any opposed? If that's a five zero, moving on then to item D, Police Officers Management Systems Agreement.
Thank you. Over the past two years, we've been using the AICS Records Management System that Chief Getson brought with him from the State Police. It's been a good system. But we received some news that in 2016, that will be the last year that the system will be in place. So I looked at a couple of systems such as New World, Tims, which is what the Kent County Sheriff's Department is on, and then the new state records management system. Because we're a small agency, we qualify for a grant, which would cover the cost of this system in the first year. After that, we would have a cost of $200 per police officer. So economically, it is a very inexpensive system for us. The TIM system was $10,000, and that included a data conversion of our old records management from 1988 to 2011. And New World was $25,000 plus. So I went and looked at the system with Leslie Huffer, one of our dispatchers, and it is a very easy system to use. It'll manage our evidence room as well as our reporting system and our micro reporting to the state. So I recommend that we go with that system. And that would be operational after this year. So it would not even hit our budget until the 2017, 2016, 2017 budget with the grant process.
Any council members, your questions? I think from the public, though.
Is it a Windows Space App that you guys are looking at? And are there any reoccurring upgrade charges for that software over the course of time? As we all know, what you buy today is obsolete tomorrow as we move forward in technology.
Due to the system, it's going to be right around that $200. They don't anticipate it going any higher, and they will do all the upgrades at their expense.
Maybe if I just throw in a comment, or Chief has done a lot of work on this. In fact, he was in my office daily for a week, I think, as sort of all went back and forth and we were discovering new things. But really, nice work, you and your staff and what you did in trying to come to a best solution.
I move that we approve and authorize the signature on the memorandum of agreement between the Michigan State Police and the Lowell Police Department for participation in the statewide records management system.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the system. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, five zero. Item E, the George Washington Resolution. And I'll just point out that it came to us through Mayor Pro Tem Ellison, who works as an administrative assistant at the Lowell Middle School. Rather interesting and unique initiative on the part of the students. And I'll let Mayor Pro Tem Ellison give us a little more background.
Yes, this was brought up by the U.S. History Class, that eighth grade history class. One of the teachers, Mr. Stempian, sent away and received a portrait of George Washington from Mount Vernon that they were going to be placing in the Lowell Middle School Library. They wanted to dedicate this, and they wanted to do something special. So the students wrote most of this resolution. They've also wrote a history and a little speech to dedicate it. The mayor is able to come and do the ceremony at the middle school on President's Day, but that's how it came about. And I've actually seen, peeked at the portrait. It's a nice addition, and it really promotes the history and makes a little bit more come alive for our students in the eighth grade.
Yes, we're looking forward to that presentation at 1:00 on.
President's Day.
President's Day. February 7th.
Did you want to read the resolution? Or? That's your job.
Resolution reads as follows. Whereas George Washington in 1774 was a delegate to the First Continental Congress, elected commander-in-chief of the Continental Army, and the Second Continental Congress in 1817 and 1775, an elected president of the Constitutional Convention in 1787, and whereas his leadership at the Battle of Trenton on December 26, 1776, during the American Revolution strengthened our chances of a free country, and whereas Americans gave faith in George Washington by electing him unanimously as the first president in 1789, and in return began leading a new country, and. a new country, and whereas George Washington set many precedents and set the course for our future, and whereas George Washington's honesty as well as well-spoken words gave Americans relief during difficult times, and whereas, as president, George Washington did not let personal beliefs or preferences get in the way of his work, and whereas Mount Vernon, through its portrait project, has gifted Lowell Middle School with a copy of Rembrandt, Peale, Porhole's portrait of George Washington, along with an American flag that flew over Washington's home, and whereas February 17, 2014, is recognized as George Washington's birthday, a federal holiday honoring George Washington. Now, therefore, we have resolved that we, this day, commemorate this portrait and its accompanying flag into our community, at this institution of education, for all to know our connection, respect, and admiration for George Washington, our country's first president, on this President's Day. So it reads.
I move that we pass this resolution as read.
Been moved and seconded to pass this resolution as presented to us. With that, a roll call vote, as it is in the resolution.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Altav?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. Some good work by those students. We look forward to that. Moving on to item number eight, our council comments. And for this, we will begin with Councilmember Altav.
I didn't have any board meetings as of yet this month. So there isn't much to say, but I do have a new grant signed. Born yesterday, so, but that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Schwab?
We did not have a meeting since the last one. I want to offer a word of thanks to those who addressed the burst pipe in downtown last week. For those of us without water for a couple days, we really appreciate the work that was done. Also appreciation for those that have been working so hard on keeping the streets safe and clear. And finally, just lifting up, I guess, one of the words that was shared by Mark Howe, which is unity. And I hope that we can all, whether we're sitting at this table, or sitting at home tonight, or if we're in the chairs, we can remember what unity looks like and we can work towards achieving it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Item Commission meets next Monday, and I would like to have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, thank you. Mayor Protem Ellison?
I don't have any updates on any of my boards or commissions yet. Meetings will be coming soon, but I do also want to say something about the State of the City address and how much I enjoyed that, especially the positive note. I mean, nobody's perfect. We all have problems, but I think we need to stick together and work towards positive change and good things in our community. It was nice to hear that from one of the manager and one of our leaders. So we support you on that, and I appreciate your words.
Thank you. February 20th will prove to be a very important and very wonderful day in our community. There's two significant events happening. At 9:00 a.m., the Biodygester will finally have a groundbreaking, and we're looking forward to Light and Power and our friends within the community all coming together for that great ceremony. So 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 20th, at the Biodygester location on Chatham Street. So we look forward to that. Later that evening, the Chamber of Commerce has its big day with a big dinner at the Grand Valute to commemorate various shining moments within our community, recognizing businesses as well as people who are significantly involved in our community. Our congratulations would go out to the Person of the Year, Greg Canfield, who also happens to chair the Light and Power Board. So it's terrific. Greg does many things, not just with Light and Power, but within the community with his own business, rescuing a couple of buildings that we were set to demolish, and he puts forth a great deal of his own dollars into making this community a better place also, as well as serving on many boards and commissions. So our congratulations to Greg Canfield, a very deserving recipient of this year's Person of the Year. The Business Appreciation Award this year goes to Laurels of Kent. This has all been announced on the website, so I'm not stealing any of Melissa's thunder, but our congratulations to Laurels of Kent and the leadership and the things that they have done within our community. They've certainly improved their business over the years. It wasn't such a great place many years ago, and they've stepped forward and made their business and the work that they do with our citizens much, much better, and they do a wonderful, outstanding service to our community. The Best Business to Watch is Ella's, our favorite little coffee shop right on this block, and certainly a great anchor to our downtown community, helping to make our community a destination location. Our nonprofit spotlight goes to Lowell Rotary Club, which has always been very active within our community, and through the various projects and efforts that it does to coordinate all of the various businesses, getting people together for lunch that normally would not get together for lunch, as well as those who sing some pretty awful songs. I mean, they're good songs, but never mind. The third award goes to Builders Fireplace, as well as Virgin's Broadband, two new businesses that are very active in our community, providing services that we haven't really seen in the past and much, much needed. So our congratulations to everyone, and it'll be a terrific celebration as the Chamber of Commerce hosts their annual dinner again on February 20th at 6:00 p.m. And I also added my notes, congratulations to Diane Jones, our new county commissioner representing our community. We look forward to working with Diane and welcome, and the fact that you were able to be here tonight also. So we look forward to moving forward, doing many great things within Kent County and our greater Lowell community. And with that, we'll move on to the managers' report. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I was going to add, Commissioner Jones, welcome, and congratulations. We look forward to working with you. The stage and showboating planning process is underway. Stakeholder sessions have been held, and a public input session will be conducted as a part of the expo on March 22. And there also was a public open house tentatively planned for April 17, and there will be additional stakeholder meetings set for late winter, the middle of the spring, and a final presentation in June. So the calendar is all set up for a lot of public input. If anybody has any ideas about what they'd like to see in terms of the stage and the showboating area, please contact me. I will promptly get you in touch with Dave Austin, who is facilitating this for us, and was Baker as well. But we welcome all the input, and we're trying to pull all the ideas and thoughts together and come up with a long-term plan for the stage and the showboating area. We submitted our EBIT collaboration plan. We had some discussion about that at our last meeting, and I decided to go with the Police Records Management System as our collaboration project for the year. So I was glad to see you approve that. Not only did we come up with a great idea, but we implemented it in record time. So that's part of our EBIT report. And then I thought I'd give you an update, and I think I'll keep doing this because everybody is wondering what's going on with winter maintenance and how is our budget doing. We spent about 61% of our budget through January on winter maintenance. Dan was throwing out some numbers today that I'm going to try to recall, but I think we went out 45 times last year total, and we've already been out 41 times. We went out last year seven times in January, and we were out 19 this January. So we're obviously polyglot, snowless as everybody else, and certainly thanks to the crews who come on after hours and do that, and we even shift schedules around somewhat to accommodate for that, and we really appreciate the work that everybody does. In the city hall and police, because the weather doesn't make it easier for any of us to do workshops, and so we have to put forth extra effort, but we appreciate that. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Point goods, we still have vacancies on the Arbor Board as well as the Planning Commission, although there is an individual who's rather interested that I've been talking to, so we'll see if that person chooses to throw his hat in the ring, and we look forward to that appointment, I believe, at our next council meeting. On the Board of Review, it's been recommended that we add an alternate delegate, and Dale Rogers has so indicated that he might be interested in that position, so I would like to appoint Dale Rogers to the Board of Review as the alternate delegate. And for that, we need a council approval?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We can take a little slow motion in a second?
Sure.
Okay. Been moved and seconded for Dale Rogers as the alternate representative to the Board of Review. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. So Dale, congratulations, I think, on the profitable job for jobs. And with that?
I move that we go into closed session as allowed under the Open Meetings Act to discuss union negotiations. 7:42.
Say a second?
Second.
Second. Been moved and seconded to go into closed session at 7:42. For this, I think we need a roll call.
Councilmember Schwab?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Altav?
No.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. I think it's done. Thank you.